I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll take you off the goings on these and welcome. Couple housekeeping things we need to take care of here to start with. We have some minutes to approve, the first one will be your March 24th, 2014, public hearing, council meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve those laws.
Motion on the floor by Mike, can we get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Donnie, all those in favor please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. We also have our March 24th, 2014 regularly scheduled council meeting minutes to approve. Get a motion to have those approved.
Make a motion for those.
Motion on the floor by Mike.
I'll second it.
And seconded by Donnie, all those in favor please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Agenda this evening.
We need to add the variance, public hearing.
That would be two variance requests.
Can we put them on?
Said you wanted to put them on top.
Put them right after.
What was it, after Brian?
After, after industrial park.
Any other additions to the agenda this evening? Make a motion to accept them. Motion on the floor, get a second, seconded by Matt, all those in favor please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. First item on the agenda this evening is, fire chief, Brian, would you bring your chair on up?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight to talk about the replacement of two of our old pumpers, 502 and 505. Talked to the fire commission in the past here and looked at what our, and where our budget was in regards to starting to spec out for a new truck for that. We also went to the rural board, talked to them and got their okay to start looking, inspecting and then finding out what our options are on a truck that we would go into a joint venture with at a 50/50 like our past trucks have been. So, we've got their okay and I would like to get that same okay from the council here so we could start to pursue that at our convenience.
Brian and I were kinda talking about, you know, if we started working to try and spec a truck now and we could possibly get it on, get the specs out and get everything approved and by the time construction would start and we would get the truck, we'd probably be looking at 18 months which would put us real close to the end of fiscal year 2015. So, with that in mind, yeah, we should be real close budget wise to be able to get that done. I think the townships had approved the maximum of 350,000.
Three, yeah, 350, correct. Each entity's portion of 175.
Right. So, yeah, I guess we get, we have two trucks, the old city truck is a 1979 Chevy and the rural truck is a 1984, 83.
83.
So, yeah, they're pretty much at the end of their useful life and, yeah, so we're gonna have to make a move at some point in time.
Each year too, I mean, it's, we've been watching over the years, the price of the truck from the 2004 that we currently have now, the Freightliner which was our, is our number one pumper today, you know, the price of this truck has gone up about $150,000 since then and it seems to go up that much, not that much, but each.
That's 10 years. That's 10 years older.
Right. So, it's that much difference. So, looking to get this started, we, like Toby said, we're 18 months away from delivery date at best, it could be.
But do you have any questions?
When looking at, when looking at purchasing new trucks like this, I've not known anything about it, but.
Do you ever, yeah.
A pumper, so to speak, usually the lifecycle is, you know, your pump capability, it's how useful it is for what our environment is compared to in other cities, it's totally different. So, no, it's, it's a very tough deal to go up for a used. Used pumpers in larger, you know, cities will, will do more pumping and more running in one year than we will in the next. Can't give them.
Okay.
A little more. And they usually are, to be like in the big city, pumping on a hydrant. In a rural situation, they will, we have to be able to adapt to hydrants and containers and stuff.
Yep, exactly. Is there any benefits do you guys financially as far as upgrading to a new truck? I mean, are your insurance rates cheaper, is there, you know, for the city wise insurance?
Well, for the, for city wise, townships, it really isn't gonna matter just because of the distance they are from our fire department. The city ISO rating, that's the insurance rating that our city would get, should, we should be about even or at least a little better if we go with.
By eliminating the two pumping capabilities in those two trucks and replacing it with a larger pump in the new truck, we aren't going to do anything but increase that, we could potentially bring that, that protection level down, which is, which would be a bonus and plus. And prior to figuring that out, we'll do the math on the ISO rating, determine where we need to be and if moving up would benefit that or not, and I think that is a decision factor. We'll look at, obviously, what is new in the last 10, 15 years, what, what will work best for us and then, and then move forward with that. It's just, you know, you don't know until you, you start the process.
What do you guys think? I would make a motion that we.
Obviously, the money is, by the time it comes, you know, with the money real floating aside for that, we'll be okay.
Motion to proceed with the process of finding a new fire truck.
Motion on the floor by Mike, can we get a second? Seconded by Matt, all those in favor please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously.
Perfect.
Have fun in the process, Brian.
It's not going to be an easy process.
It's a long, you know, process, so.
But definitely worthwhile. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks.
You're welcome, thank you.
Might as well leave it.
See you, Brian.
Next item on our agenda, moving that variance request down a notch would be our industrial park lots three and four. Scott, you wanna give us a rundown?
I was contacted by Calm and Denny said they are looking to purchase lot three with a rate of refusal, a lot four, correct?
Yeah, whatever works, I guess.
Like in Matt, we're digging in.
And that is Schmooey Oil?
Yes.
What'd you guys come up with?
Four and a half hours of research. We dug around, there obviously hasn't been a lot sold since when was it, like 90s?
2005 was the last lot before.
Before Chris.
Jack and Laurie's Pierce sanitation.
We, we found out and, and looked at past purchase agreements and it seemed the trend, what used to be, I know Jack had paid, an assessment at the time, okay, alongside a Rich Prairie sewer and water assessments, the other buildings back there upon digging and researching it, it seemed like they paid close to equal amounts for those lots. The dilemma that we bring forth, I guess, tonight is how we're gonna proceed going forward with the sale of these lots potentially. You know, I guess I was, I was from the understanding and informed that there was assessments on those lots at the time. So, where we go forward from here, I think that what we need to do is, is look at whether we decide to sell the lots for a dollar amount or whether we decide to sell them for, you know, $10,000, there needs to be things in place as far as what we expect out of these business owners back there, you know, details as far as that goes because when we look back, there was really nothing in there. As far as anything that was clear.
What we found is, you know, many times from 1999 on forward, even back in 98, here's the justification, June 8th of 1998, the US Department of Commerce gave a grant for industrial park to the city of Pierce for $253,800. The city's share of that was 40%, which was $169,200. The city bonded for that, paid the bond off in 10 years, which was out of the levy basically, so every taxpayer's money, you know, and, and then it goes on. Many times we found where it, the councils had discussion on doing a written policy to promote, to sell those lots and how to charge for them. Many times it, we found where it said the lots were estimated at between 10 and 13,000. One, one discussion we had or found that was written down between 12 and 15,000, well when you go back in the history of it, everybody paid $10,625.
That's assessments, that's not like that.
Yeah. That was just the, the city road assessment. Well, where Tom is right now, Gore Tech went in there, they paid, they, for each lot, $10,625. Banner Bus was next, Banner Bus was the unique situation, at the time the road was being put in and there needed to be a spot for the sedimentation pond. Well, Banner Bus wanted two lots, they did get two lots, but the city took the half, back half of both those lots and constructed that sedimentation pond. So, in the minutes we found where the council back then forgave the assessment on one lot because the city used, and they got the front, you know, basically to front half of each lot and they paid one assessment. Rich Prairie Water and Sewer, that was forgiven because it was the water tower and it was for the community and it was like, you're gonna make them pay the discussion came, you're taking taxpayer money to pay taxpayer money again, you know. Jack and Laurie paid, and it didn't go on, Tom, when I quoted to you the one day, I was going on, I hadn't researched this far yet, I took Jack and Laurie's $10,625 and tried to go by the foot and it came up to 126 something low and I quoted Tom, it was pretty astronomical, I think it came to like 21,000 a lot. And after Matt and I dug for 400 hours plus, we found this and, and like I say, nothing was set as a motion or set in stone, it talked about RD had the right to come back and audit the city because each one of those lots as they were given in X amount of years and they were supposed to create X amount of jobs at that facility or with that lot. And all the years I back there, I can't remember that RD ever did come and audit us, you know, and I could be, but we found nothing. I mean, we went from 1995 to about 2000, well, to 2005.
Yep. So, you know. So, there was nothing ever within clear writing, it was, it was discussed with the past council that it should be discussed and they should come to a conclusion, but that was never done. I mean, we read through all the minutes down there for years.
So, now basically what we have, just to make a long story short here, is we have Schmooey Oil, we have premium concrete and we have Pierce sanitation, if I'm not mistaken, is all looking for a lot, okay, under the assumption that those lots were a dollar a lot. I think that's the assumption.
Without city assessments.
Without the assessments. What are we gonna do with these requests now, I guess, is, is what we need to figure out because there, there is no policy in place.
Well, I think we need to set something up, you know, I mean.
Regardless, yeah, I agree, regardless of whether we choose to sell any lot for X amount of dollars or whatever we decide to do, there needs to be something, a whole guidance thing back there as far as what is allowable, what's.
Well, we got, we got three businesses who want to look at doing some type of construction coming up here, what, what's the gist or what's.
When I first kinda thought about it, you know, I'm not the kind of person that would just really wanna give something away and, and not get anything in return for it, however, you know, like you said, you have three businesses, there's six empty lots back there, if I'm not mistaken.
Possibly seven.
Possibly seven, yeah.
There's one, two, eleven total.
Seven. Seven lots home that we've got here, so we said we have seven. I'm more leaning towards the side now where, you know, that, that industrial park's been sitting idle, okay, for a long time, there hasn't been much activity back there, no why, okay. I think that the industrial park down there, now, up over there now is maybe not necessarily set up for a large business to come into town, it's, it's for what these guys are trying to do here, you know, with Jack's operation he's got going on, potentially Chris getting in there. I envision things like that back there, then more so big industry, okay?
Nothing, nothing big would go back there.
I can see.
We don't have the room.
Yeah. So, where I'm at now is, I think the city should start looking towards increasing tax base and that's exactly what these buildings would do back there. You know, I'm confident that if we had sold these lots for a dollar or really low priced, we would have a lot of people knocking on the door and, and they would be full, okay? So, that's the side that I'm leaning towards most. I had called the county, talked with the gentleman that appraises commercial property over in the Pierce area and he had said that an average building at $150,000 including that lot, which they are, the lots are usually valued back there at about 30 to 38,000, okay? So, the taxes on that would be roughly 4,500 dollars a year, now that includes school, that includes county, that includes city of Pierce. Okay? So, I look at the back end of things, when are we gonna, if we had sold a lot for $10,000 now, well, yeah, we'd make 60, 70,000 dollars upfront, okay? But the sooner you can fill those lots up back there, the sooner you're gonna get a tax return on that property. So, if you take that $4,000 and you figure a third of it's, 4,500 dollars, you figure a third of it's gonna come back to the city, you look at the year 2020, if you sell two lots every two years, you would make your return on what you, at least on what you would've sold those lots for $10,000 upfront. So, I guess that's where I'm at on it, I know when me and you might talk.
And I still take the stance, Jack and Laurie paid, you know, and I know, I do agree with you, Matt, we need to move ahead, but also wanna go back up. Every city taxpayer in this town paid for that bond to help promote this and the way it was set up, you know, we were gonna recapture most of the money but, but some of the interest, which was, you know, I believe the city needs to give a little bit to get something going. I don't say we have to charge $10,625, I could be dealt down, but I think it's my responsibility as a councilperson to look out for the finances of all the people that elect me and we gotta get something back on our, on our return.
You would get.
Here's my take on it and, and Mike, I agree with, I agree with you on a lot of what you're saying. The problem is, is after 18 years, our industrial park has failed, it has, we've had three businesses in 18 years using this policy, which has not worked, okay? So, what can the city do economically and what kinda economic development, you know, tool do we have to put people in those lots and start collecting a tax base? I mean, we've had this money tied up for 18 years, you know, and have gotten, you know, very little in return, you know? If we don't do something, if we don't change something drastically, we're gonna be sitting here with another two or three lots sold in the next 18 years.
And knowing, knowing, I can't speak for these guys because I haven't talked to them personally about it, but knowing what the lots sold for last year, is that, what sparked in the interest, I mean, maybe they'd be interested anyway, but, you know, thinking they're gonna cost them 10,000 to 20,000 dollars for those lots or thinking that we've, using more of an EDA type tool and selling them without city assessment and just RIPS on assessment, does that make those lots more appealing to these businesses, is that part of the reason they're here looking at them? I don't know, we'd have to ask them, but indeed, you know, I understand the city paid, you know, the taxpayers paid that, paid on that kinda thing, but they haven't gotten anything for their return in 18 years.
But they.
Yeah, it's, it's time to make it, it's time, but no, you sell them for the minimum without the city assessments, just the RIPS on assessments, you're more likely to generate, like you said, the tax base, hopefully gets more employees in there, but at least generate tax base from the buildings and that type of thing.
And the law.
And the law, well, yeah, that's what I mean, the assessments from all of that, I think, to me, encouraging our businesses to come in to use our property, to come in, take advantage of, for lack of anything else to call it, an EDA tool. We gave loans out and, and that type of thing, low interest loans to help some of our other businesses come and remodel or buy a business or that kind of a thing. What's wrong with using this mechanism, which is what we did for Chris Holheisel, use this mechanism so he can afford to build that building and bring his employees in and do something to generate a tax base?
If we went to done that, Chris would do this, wouldn't he?
No, you're not.
That's what I'm saying and I can tell you, some of these might not, who knows?
One of these, one of things too, as long as we're on topic, industrial park is that I think if somebody would build a building back there, Jack, did you use an EDA loan when you built your building?
No.
You didn't?
Nope, they didn't have that.
Okay. So, the thing is, is looking back even too with Mike, one thing that was a concern for me is that if you go through the EDA, there is certain stipulations, they would like to see the employees increased over X amount of years, there's different stipulations. The way the industrial park stands now, from my understanding after reading those minutes, if we would sell a lot for a dollar and somebody would say, I don't wanna get an EDA loan, I, I just want to build a building, there would technically wouldn't be really any stipulations on any structure back there, the amount of employees, timeframe on a building being built onto that land, potential resale of that land, for if you only buy it for a dollar and you have a piece of land that's worth 35,000, well, you know, there's nothing in writing at all that says that, so that would have to be.
A lot of this has to be put in.
Exactly.
And I, and I know that when you start talking to businesses, you know, can go into venture, you know, saying, yeah, hey, we wanna hire 10, 20, how many ever employees? It's so economy driven that it's hard for them to guarantee that we're gonna have 15, 20.
When, when you, when you say the industrial park failed, I would have to argue that because over the years, the industrial park hasn't failed, over the years we've had, we've had setbacks in the economy and everybody has felt it and that's why the industrial park hasn't had it on. When you, when you say we actually failed, we didn't fail, we didn't have any one of these people come five years ago and say, hey, your assessments are roughly 10,000, would you do it for five so we could put a building out there? Nobody's ever been interested, nobody's ever asked that question until Chris Waisa came along.
Well, the thing is, Donnie, it, it has failed because in 18 years, we've got three businesses back there. We decided, listen, listen, we decided to put one business back there and sold that lot for a dollar, okay? Now, we have four other businesses, there are three other businesses who understand that as well, trust me, that's why they're here. So, in 18 years, three lots, that's a failure.
I would still argue that because the same point is, is if we, my house is 16 years old and I was looking up buying one of these Meyer State houses on lots and I never did, so they've been there 16 years, there's still some that are not sold, so does that mean that addition failed then because they're not sold out?
It's not an economic development.
Well, but it's, if they put the $200,000 home there, we've got taxes on a $200,000 home.
Exactly. Well, let's look at, let's go back and look at it again, we got industrial park, like I said, three lots in 18 years. Do you consider that a success?
Well, it's hard to say that it's a success or a failure.
I think after 18 years, we gotta figure it out, it has not worked.
And the way that I see it too, and I'm not gonna point finger at, at past council members from 10, 15 years ago or anything like that.
No, I understand the concept behind it.
Oh, and I do too, as I do as well, but you can go and blame that same developer, well, maybe he was asking too much for his.
Money for that lot.
For his lot.
No, no, if you're gonna take and sell any of that residential lot for a dollar, you think somebody'd come along and build their $200,000 else on it?
Wouldn't they paying for assessments on that?
We're losing sight of where we're at, let's go back and.
You're just making examples.
I know, I know that, but we need to kind of go back to the industrial park and not the residential.
I don't know, that's, that's, that's my take on it is, is it just has not worked and if we don't do something different, we're gonna be sitting here, you know, not collecting anything off these lots again, so.
Well, and the thing is too, is you look at a gentleman like Tom, he's got himself a pretty successful business there, he's looking to enhance and entice his business. I'm not gonna put that kind of a burden on him when he's looking at extending his property lines and he can put up other buildings to improve, I just think that's, that's unfair at that point. You know, I'm willing to do anything that, to help out, you know, a small business, that's what I'm about and if it entails selling a lot for a dollar to Tom, knowing what he'll pay for taxes on that land and what he's gonna do with that land, I have no problem selling that for a dollar, I can assure you of that.
Well, what do you wanna do? Well, I mean, in here we're talking, there's industrial, so Tom's the only one on here?
Tom was the only one that approached me.
For now.
For me, yeah, approached me, yes.
What do you guys think?
Listen, she's got a question.
Um, I got a question, if they're gonna get theirs for a dollar, what about us, why did we have to pay $10,625?
You know something, Lori, I can't help what happened 15 years ago, all I can tell you is that we're sitting with a development that has not worked.
You know, and when we got that too, we were, we almost didn't get it, we were told we had a, we couldn't sell nothing for five years, could, because we would be pro, making our business look better by buying that land and only paying a dollar and we had to sign, I don't know if we signed it, but we almost had a promise that, you know, we couldn't sell our business for five years because that wouldn't be fair because we got it only for a dollar.
But it's the best thing it did.
And that's another reason we're having this conversation, Lori, is because there has never been any policy developed on those lots, you know? It's almost as if these numbers were just pulled right out of thin air and written down on a purchase agreement because there's nothing set in stone and, and Jack and Laurie, I feel really bad about that, that we can't go back and reimburse or do anything like that, all I can do is control looking forward with this, I wasn't in charge of anything at that time and I'm not gonna point fingers and like I said, I.
No, I think the concept was good, they were trying to get their money back and, and I understand that completely, thing is, it just.
Well, how, how come this happened with Chris then? I mean, Chris, did Chris pay just a dollar and that, that's all he paid?
We used a, for Chris, we used a, an EDA loan and we had viewed that as a tool where to entice business to come into the industrial park, we gave out a loan to him and, you know, we're not obviously gonna make 10, 15, 20,000 dollars off the interest on that loan, but it is something, you know? Like I said, when I was informed about the sale of these industrial park lots, okay, I was told and I was under the assumption that there was city assessments charged on there, okay, I voted on it.
Yeah.
To sell that lot for a dollar. Now, is it my fault that the assessments that I assumed would be charged on that weren't? Yes, it is because that was my decision.
Yeah.
Being misinformed and not doing research on my part, but I can assure you one thing, that that same mistake will not happen again. Because there will be stuff back there, there will be regulations, purchase agreements, price, you know, things like that.
And if you go back, I think a precedent was set when you had Gretzky paying on two lots, Jack and Laurie and Banner Bus. Yes, I agree, nothing got written down, but a policy or a procedure was basically put in place and it just, I mean, four people paid or four lots paid.
Right.
And, and, and moving forward, hey, I just, I'm not comfortable and I will not give them away, I mean, it's a dollar and if we charge 5,000 or seven or, we come up with a number, it doesn't have to be 10, 6, 25, but I just can't, I'm not gonna go out and face the people on the street that paid 3% interest for 10 years to help entice things and yes, I still wanna entice things. and yes, I still wanna entice things, but...
But there's also gonna be, there's a...
Do we ever want to get the money back?
There, yeah, and there's also gonna...
Do we ever wanna get that money back?
We're never gonna get it all back, but I think we should try and get some.
But there's also, but, and you had mentioned that you're, it's gonna be hard to justify for you to sit and tell taxpayers, hey, we missed the boat on it. I look at it the other way, where you're gonna have people out in public saying, why don't you guys get these lots sold and increase your tax base? Now, why sit back there with those empty lots?
We're gonna have to agree to disagree because we're never gonna go there, I, I know what I am saying.
We'll have, we'll have the Jack and Laurie saying, we paid ten six hundred and fifty dollars than anybody else.
Long and short of it is, is, somebody once told me the definition of insanity was to keep doing things over and over and over again that don't work and expect different results. So are, are we gonna, are we gonna continue trying to charge for the lots and not sell them? And taxpayers can sit on the money and make...
Taxpayers aren't sitting on the money, Toby, they paid for it already.
Well, they still sitting on it, you know what I mean? Or do we want to use these lots as an economic benefit to start collecting those taxpayers and, and get that money back? You know?
And, and in the short of it too, if we're gonna sit and look at charging five thousand dollars a lot or twenty-five hundred, let's say we settle on five thousand, if that's what gets approved, okay, you have seven lots back there, that thirty-five thousand dollars, the quicker that you fill those lots up is the quicker that you're gonna make a return, and I can guarantee you that you're gonna have a bigger return of that thirty-five thousand dollars in the long run as soon as we fill that up.
Well, the thing is, the taxpayers need to get their money back somehow, someone, I agree with you, Mike, they need to get their money back. Selling them isn't working already, so what else do we do then, you know what I mean?
Let me tell you what, for, for five thousand one dollars, you gotta start somewhere, you gotta try. And, I mean, I would make the motion that it's a dollar to the city and five thousand dollars for the assessments towards the road, and we still need to come up with, like, I agree with you, Matt, there's gotta be some stipulations in there.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
You know, that...
We're gonna have to sit down and, and agree on that, and that's gonna be, I mean, we can pull somewhat off the EDA guidelines, but there's gotta be a lot more.
Yeah. And you have to make, you know, like, Tom has an interesting business, um, he's gonna put up some storage facilities and, and maybe he's gonna create another job or two, I, you know, you make, um, you have to be a little flexible on some of that too.
Oh, right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, for sure.
I mean, I don't expect that Tom buys one lot and has to create, you know, like, the original thing was, they had a, you have six employees in five or eight years, whatever it was, you know?
Right. That employee's already sitting there, he's already working them.
Right.
But, yeah, I mean, you, you don't wanna be judgmental to yourself where you sell a lot off for a dollar, but then you have all these guidelines and then that's gonna shy somebody with what you wanna do back there, no, I mean, I don't think it needs to be anything that stringent, but there needs to be clear-cut definition in, for a policy, 'cause that's what got us in trouble in the first place.
Yeah, we need to have a policy, I agree, a hundred percent.
I don't know, I guess I've, I've always been under the assumption since I've been here and that lots in industrial parks sold for a dollar, and we've ever said anything or we've never brought up about anything.
Well, I knew there was, and even when we went through...
And when I asked, last year when we were selling it, I asked four times, and I was told by everybody here that it was, yes, you were one of them, like...
I, in the EDA meeting, and I said right down, it's a dollar, and there is some assessments attached to it, you need to research them. And I blame, I, I'll take the blame on that too, I should've went down, I knew there were assessments.
Absolutely.
I think we all dropped the ball, and I'll be the first one to admit.
I think I asked four times.
Yep, and that...
When we bought our lot, we were told we, they didn't wanna give out to us another stipulation, 'cause we maybe weren't adding no new employees back when we bought it.
Correct.
Yeah, you're supposed to have, what, five?
But if, but if you didn't go through an EDA loan, there is no contract, that we found, there is no stipulation.
You know, I don't know if we were told that through the council or Arvin Linke, what's he on?
Playing zone, no.
Zoning.
The only stipulations that were there was with the RD part of it, and like I said, we've never, ever been audited on it.
The rural development grant that we got. Right, but that might've been, when they got it, it might've been part of the fact that you got it through the rural development, because the, it was built on your rural development grant, that might've been part of their stipulation for rural development.
Okay.
That, that's how, even though you didn't go directly through rural development, that's what it was built through, and that might've been why you were told by the council or whomever at that time, would be my guess.
Well, I seriously, I don't think anybody made a mistake, I think we're all under the, at least like I said, I was under the assumption, Matt, you gave a lot to wait for a dollar, somebody was willing to do the dollar, you know? So what's, uh, what's the consensus of the council, what would you guys like to do, how would you like to proceed, would you like to draft a set of policies?
Well, we're gonna have to draft some, because for a dollar, I'll be the first one to buy a lot and hang any kind of shingle up on the front end of a business and use it to store my toys.
That's right, yeah, but...
And you'll have ten people, we'll have the lots gone in a minute.
But that's why there's gonna have to go.
When you, when you talk about the stipulations and...